Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk call, roll please.
Brown.
Here.
Evans, here, Booty.
Here.
Grattan.
Here.
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 First item of business is agenda approval. Is there a motion approved of agenda printed?
Some of.
Motion by Brown, second by Schuster. Any further discussion, questions, or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, carry. For minutes of previous meetings.
Agreed.
Motion by Grattan.
Agreed.
Second by Evans. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, carry. Public appearance and citizens comments. We have Donna Brown from the Dodge County Housing Authority authority regarding Resolution 50-2021. Donna?
Hello.
You might want to come right up in here so we can get your...
You've got cameras?
Yeah.
I didn't know that. Okay, thanks. So, I am Donna White from the Housing Authority. And I just passed. And I am here tonight, so, um, there's... The Neighborhood Investment Fund program is a grant, and it is available to local government units and tribal government units to apply for ARPA funds. It's $200 million for the funds that are allowed, and grants are between $1 million and $15 million. And so, as the Housing Authority, we are asking the city of Juneau to serve as our local government unit applicant so that we can fund a housing project that we have in development. So, there was a webinar today. Talked about some details about it and such. The application is due November 4, and the Housing Authority would prepare all of the details put together for the grant, do all the information for it, but it would need to be submitted by the city of Juneau. And specific questions yet, if you can, on the pages I didn't put much together for the grant itself. I have with me the application process, and I have with me the details of the grant itself. Huge benefit is that it's a grant. We would be looking to apply for probably $10 million, which would mean our housing project would move much faster. It would have more local control. We wouldn't be regulated as far as the tax credits is either financing option that we'd be looking at would limit, you know, income limits if he lives there, different things. This is, this short window is an advantage and a disadvantage. So, it is an advantage because of project has to be, you know, shovel-ready, ready to go. You couldn't put something together between now, I don't know, you could put something together between now and the November 4 deadline. So, it means that there will be some applicants that aren't eligible, but it will be very competitive because it's grant money, and it's going to be, you know, up to $15 million per applicant. So, we have a project that we think will fit well. It hits childcare, education, things that have been affected by COVID. Everybody's been affected by COVID. Anything that was a problem before was probably amplified during COVID. And so, housing is a big need, has always been, but has really brought, you know, to attention especially right now. So, any questions I can answer?
Can you give us some details in regards to this shovel-ready project that you already have?
Yeah.
Because we are, I mean, you say shovel-ready project, you have something in the works, and it's like...
Yeah, we're a little out of order because we plan to come, so we were working on application as through December 4, and so, the end of the month, we're coming to the planning commission to talk about the shovel-ready project. So, we're kind of out of order here in that this application deadline came up, this grant became available, but only got released at the end of September and is due already. So, timing is kind of out of, out of it. But what we're looking to do is partnering with another community, and it would be 40 units of housing. Similar to our project in Horkon, we did last year where we have 20 units, three bedrooms, one and a half baths, located across the street from the school in Horkon.
Say with another, partnering with another community?
So, I have another public meeting later that would release that, that location.
Okay.
So...
But Juneau is...
Juneau is the, is one of the communities where the units would be located.
Is this $10 million between the two communities?
It is, it is combined. So, it'd be 40 units of housing total, and that...
Between the two communities?
Between the two communities, yeah, yeah. The majority of the units are in Juneau, but the $10 million would be for the total project for both, both of those locations. Sorry.
Do you have a location near Mars?
We do. We have a location here in Juneau that, that we are working with the owner of that land now. It's strange, I know, but I, I don't want to get ahead of your planning meeting. If that matters, I don't know. But it, it's a, it's a property that's already, it's already zoned. We just need to come with our changes to that, that plan for that land.
Sean and I did tour the facilities that they recently constructed over in Horkon. We suggested a few things that would work in Juneau a little bit better, which they agreed with. Be win-win for both of us.
Which is hard to come into planning. I'd like to get input from the planning committee, not necessarily come and just say, here's what we're, I mean, here's what we have planned, but the community always knows what's best. So, it's helpful to get some tweaks to that. You know, I guess the, if this grant application wasn't an option, it could be contingent on your planning commission approving whatever the plan is because we want that stay to still come from your community. So, is that, makes sense?
Kind of got the card over.
Yeah, it just came up with this timing as such, and it's such an opportunity. I mean, I will tell you that I, I didn't dream of a grant that would be worth millions of dollars, that could be available, and there will be people that want this, but, you know, the trick is, can you put it together? Can you get it submitted by 2:00 PM on November 4? Because if you can't, you're not even in the running. And if you can, then it's going to be competitive to see what we can do, but, you know, childcare, employment, housing, transit, all those things hit everywhere, and especially hitting rural communities affected by COVID, so.
Well, this housing was a need way before COVID, I think, too.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. COVID was just really amplified the need, so.
You want to touch upon the performance of the Horkon unit? Shared some details about...
Sure, sure, yeah, absolutely. So, so, in Horkon, we built 23-bedroom, bathroom had duplexes, and in that community, there are 10, uh, I'm sorry, there are six disabled adults and four disabled children. There are five households that have increased employment since they've moved in. We started construction in April of 2020, and we finished in December of 2020. And we're fully occupied by March of 2021. That process, though, backs up by financing things to get to that level. So, again, this grant will take us right to that starting point rather than having to put together the 10 or 11 different funding sources that it takes to put the whole package together to get all the money that you need to build it. So, there were 18 children added to the school district in January. So, keep in mind, we started, we basically filled the first units in December, and by the middle of January, there were 18 kids that came to that school district. I don't know if anybody filled the school boards here, but from what I recall, it's like $10,000 a kid that comes into the school district based on how many are there. So, that's a considerable amount of money. And we've had more, more kids added as we filled the units for the fall semester. Any child you keep in the district or bring into the district is good for you and the community after the district. On our project that we're working on now with Juneau, we have, you know, community support from the school district and employers and, you know, other, other folks that we've been working with as well, so.
Sounds like a wonderful project.
Oh, we're really excited, and we hope so, yeah, yeah.
Just need to, are you open to another tour with plan?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. I've given lots of tours. I'm willing to tour if anybody wants to come see it, so.
Any other questions?
There is a possibility that the Housing Authority could be a local government unit, but we have to get that confirmed by the DOA, which means we, we wouldn't actually need you to sponsor, but we're here tonight to ask you to sponsor on the commission. They say that we aren't. So, I guess what I would like to do is ask Sean to submit the question so we could put it together, so you could submit to the DOA to say, you know, we have this project that we're interested in, here are the options for it, and we can word it that way. It would make it simpler, but if we can't, then do our opportunity because, you know, to get this through to any other entity would be difficult and a short-time grant, so.
Very good. Any other questions for Donna? What do you suggest we handle this, Sean?
Uh, there is a resolution in here just authorizing us to submit if we need to, and then also giving us permission, or giving you, Mayor, the permission to sign the paperwork and stuff.
Is that under planning commission?
Uh, that is under finance.
Okay, great.
But I would, I would suggest that we submit after plan commission.
Okay, and the webinar today talked about how to do it, in that we can basically put the whole thing together and submit everything online, so whoever this signer is can just go on and sign, so.
Great.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else in attendance under public comments tonight? So, Sean, you have something to...
We are, oh, we were, we thought we were on the agenda. I guess not.
I guess not.
Uh, yes, we do have, uh, we came, uh, we went last week, or a couple weeks ago, to Public Safety regarding our outdoor seating, and throughout the application for the outdoor seating for our bar, we had placed the, on the application, October 1 as the end of the outdoor seating, and because of Halloween, and we were hoping to actually extend it to end of this month, so that's why it hasn't been removed yet. So, we wanted to know if we can extend our extension of premise for our liquor license.
John, I'm going to turn it over to you. He discussed this with me earlier, why it wasn't on the agenda, so.
Yeah, you had to submit it to the, to the city and get another application filled out. Did you do that, or not?
No, because at the meeting, it was, uh, under our, our understanding was that it was going to all be submitted from that point, so if it's, hasn't, I, then I guess we missed it, so.
Yeah, I think you had to go submit another application to extend it to 31st of October.
Okay.
Because officially, your, your application was terminated on the 1st for the extension.
Correct, so.
Sean?
And the reason, the reason he has October 1 on his extension of premises is because the pilot program that we passed, within the rules and regulations that states it needs to end by October 1.
We touched upon that at the Public Safety meeting.
So, it would, it would need to be, I mean, these rules and regulations would need to be changed prior to issuing him an extension of premise for the outdoor cafe.
That's why...
That's why I probably put October 1 in the first place on there. Okay, well, I mean, that is perfectly final pass. We will remove it this week. We will make sure that us, we need to remove it, otherwise people will be under impression that they can stop taking beverages outside. We'll remove it, and then following year, what we want, we'll try to right away do is work on having this longer date. So, I apologize for any inconvenience that it wasn't clear to us as to the process, so.
I wasn't sure where we left it, but John can refresh my memory, and Jane checked the, the minutes, and that was kind of where it was left. You were supposed to fill out an app, then we could have acted upon it tonight, an application for extension, and we could have acted on it tonight. And that's why we were talking about that 12-day window.
Yeah.
Where you wouldn't really be able to use it, but is there any other committee that could act upon it if you filled one out, and you've got to do it with the entire council?
Got to change the...
You got to change the, the pilot program.
Right, so, so, no, it's a perfectly normal, I understand what, what it is. At the last meeting, it was indicated, I, I'm pretty certain I even asked it if we needed to fill anything out. It was kind of like last minute, even that meeting that we went to. So, just giving us an opportunity to, to hear us out here right now is good enough for us.
I think you did have full support of the plan commission as far as authorizing an extension, it was just the fact that we have to go through the, to the normal steps to make it happen. You know, had you filled that application out, we could have acted upon it tonight. You would have had a 12-day limbo period where you couldn't use it. As of tomorrow, you would have been able to use it again.
Sure, sure.
But that didn't happen.
Is that an ordinance that has to be changed first?
It's, it's not an ordinance, yeah.
It's a policy.
So, my, my understanding was that this was, uh, first year was just going to be a test pilot, basically, and then if it's, uh, if it's something that works, it would, uh, we would implement it as a ordinance. So, I guess the first objection from my side is to extend the time frame.
Yeah, if the weather's decent, you want to go to, you don't have October or whatever.
So, just last question for following year. Should we, is this going to be something that we work between now and the following spring, put it on the agenda and go through the meetings, or should we wait till spring?
It would be something at Public Safety. Would have to bring it to, bring it into an ordinance. Once Public Safety says, okay, let's throw this into an ordinance, it's going to take two readings for the ordinance. So, the earliest, I mean, if they did on this month's agenda, the earliest would probably be 1st of January, or January that it probably gets to become an ordinance.
Okay.
But again, that's up to Public Safety Committee, and when they would let them bring that up.
Because my understanding, once it's an ordinance, then we don't have to necessarily go through all these different steps, correct?
You, you would still need to apply and pay the party fee and everything else, right?
But it wouldn't be like all three different meetings?
Correct, correct.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, sorry about the misunderstanding.
That's okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else here to speak under communications? Hold on, we'll move on to payment of bills. Checks for $92,638.76. Vouchers for $93,614.06. Electronic transfers are $175,143.06. There are motion to approve the payment of bills.
Some of.
Motion by Brown, second by Schuster. Any further discussion, questions, or comments? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Booty.
Aye.
Grattan.
Aye.
Payment of bills have been passed. Reports of officials. Mayor, ordinance 265, 2021. Ordinance to amend ordinance 2.04.030 reflecting changes in the city of Juneau's ward boundaries. This would be the second reading. Is there a motion to dispense with the second reading and commence the voting?
Some of.
Motion by Grattan, second by Schuster. Any further discussion? John, you want to touch upon it for the press's benefit, so he gets it right in the paper?
Sure. So, 2020 census came out, and, well, the purpose of redistricting is to ensure that everybody is equally represented, the wards are contingent, and basically, you need to be between 300 voting, or 300 people, 1,000 people within each voting ward or each ward. So, what we had to do was, when the census came back, Ward 1 had over 1,000 people, so we had to redistrict. So, what we did is, we took Ward 2, we moved it up to West North Street, between Western Avenue and North Fairfield Avenue. We took a section of Ward 1 between Juneau Avenue, Oak Point Drive, and south of Victory Street, moved that into Second District, and then we also took a portion of North Main Street between, between North Main Street, West Street, and south of West North Street, moved that into District 2. So, what that equates to is basically every single district or ward has about 830 people in it now. So, that should spice us for a couple of years, for the next couple of census blocks, because this is something you don't want to do every 10 years. You want to keep it as, your goal is not to do it ever again.
Donna's going to have us doing it again real soon. That would give it away.
Three, I think.
Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Do we have a motion to approve ordinance?
Yes.
Yeah.
Who was it? Schuster or Grattan?
Grattan and Schuster.
Grattan and Schuster.
Okay. Grattan.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Booty.
Aye.
Ordinance 265, 2021 has passed. Next, we have Resolution 4821, or 2021, approve mayor royal appointments to the common council, finance committee, rec. committee, personnel committee, and the library board. Whereas the mayor has diligently searched for individuals willing to give of themselves by serving on the common council, finance committee, recreation committee, personnel committee, and the library board, and whereas the mayor wishes to make the following appointments. Kay Meros, common council, first ward to fill the term going to April of 2023, term presently, or previously filled by Paul Shanks. Richard Evans will be moving to the finance committee. His term will end 4/22. Kay Meros, recreation committee, 4/2022. Kay Meros, personnel committee and chair, April of 2022. Kay Meros, library board, April of 2022. Now therefore be resolved that the common council of the city of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendations passed by the common council of the city of Juneau this 12th day of October. And obtain a motion for passage.
I know for passage, Resolution 4821.
Motion by Schuster.
Second.
Second by Brown. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Schuster.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Booty.
Aye.
Grattan.
Aye.
Resolution 48, 2021 has passed. This time, we'll turn it over to the clerk treasurer for swearing in a new councilman.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Kay Meros.
I, Kay Meros.
Having been appointed as first ward alderman.
Having been appointed as first ward alderman.
In and for the city of Juneau, Dodge County, Wisconsin.
In and for the city of Juneau, Dodge County, Wisconsin.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully perform the duties of my office to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully perform the duties of my office to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Well, congratulations. If you would like to take your seat.
I move out.
Welcome back.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't know certain things when I said this. When he asked, we might not have known certain things either, so.
Should be a soft year for you, Kay. We only have to find a clerk and a deputy clerk. Not much left on your plate. I relieve some of the pressure by putting Richard on, on finance, otherwise you would have had that. Welcome back.
Hello again.
Anything else, Sean?
Um, so, we, I do want to bring up a little, maybe a little dialogue in regards to consent agenda. Alderman Brown had noticed within the municipal, Wisconsin municipalities magazine that they come out with monthly, nice little article in regards to consent agendas. Basically, what it is, is it kind of groups simple things such as approving minutes, approving payables, sharing reports and everything, everything added to basically one big motion, which is usually at the beginning of the agenda. It's not something that, it's usually things that aren't controversial, like we have trick-or-treat resolution on the agenda tonight that could be in that consent agenda as all, as well. It's a good way to kind of shorten up meetings if we feel like it's going to be longer, if we just, if that's what we want to continue doing. Andrew, I don't know if you want to...
There's quite a few cities that are moving to this. I've read now a number, about a half dozen cities in the state of Wisconsin have started doing it last year, so I think it's a good idea. If it's something, it's got to be something that's totally non-controversial. So, if it's not controversial, put it on there. I would recommend it to you.
The rubber stamp type of...
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly, the rubber stamp.
And, and you have the option, so once you get your packet, whether it be on Friday or Sunday, as in this case, you can call, you can have things called out from that consent agenda if you want to discuss about it at the meeting. So, once it's in that consent agenda, it's not stuck there. It can be pulled out and placed on the actual agenda for discussion.
But it's best to point that out in advance.
Correct.
Do that.
It behooves us to look at our agendas immediately.
Exactly.
And come out, just in case we're like, we want this discussion to be had so that questions can be asked, because when it's within a consent agenda, there is no discussion.
Right.
It is.
Right.
So, if you have questions, it's, you don't get the opportunity to ask it.
That's why you want to limit the ones that are slam dunk and not controversial. But if that's not the case, point that out.
And something we track for next meeting and see how it works, and if it doesn't work, we can always go back to.
We'd still have Jeanette share her...
Yeah. Nothing controversial.
Okay, moving on to the written reports. Building permit report, police department report, Juneau fire and rescue report, and a Juneau EMS report. Any questions or comments on those? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports committees, commissions, and boards. Library report. Jeanette.
So, the candy in front of you is leftover from the Dodgeland homecoming parade. So, the library did have an entry, and rumor has it that, that maybe we placed, I don't know. The judges couldn't be bought. I tried. Anyway, we had a good time, and that's the thing I love about being a community, a city of Juneau department. Like, we championed Juneau, and so it's fun to dress up like Queen of Hearts every once in a while, too. So, some things that we're excited about are some slow reopenings of some of our in-person programming. Our newer, she's been with us a little under six months, adult service librarian Carla is bringing crafting to the library, so we have crafternoons, trying to get that group that's normally interested in crafting in the library and a crafter dark, really hoping to bring in people that do work throughout the day and can come in at 6:00 PM to do that same craft. We still have the take-and-make option as well for those people not interested in maybe coming in, in a public area so far, so. And then we have Crocktober. So, we're going, October's given us lots of stuff. So, it is crockpot season, right? So, we have purchased several new cookbooks that either go with InstaPots or Crockpots, that kind of warm, set-it, forget-it type of recipe. We're asking people to come in and check out some of those new resources and actually take a blank recipe card. So, we're hoping that people will share some of their favorite recipes. If you share one, we'll give you our little combined cookbook at the end of the month. So, just a way to get involved and to have people check out some of our newer resources. We also have a pumpkin decorating contest. Lisa Bear was a very talented crafter. She painted this pumpkin based on Grumpy Cat, so I think she did a nice job. So, we're actually asking, we have the artificial pumpkins. We're asking people to come in, it doesn't matter if you're a child, a teen, an adult, come in, grab an artificial pumpkin, and decorate it based on any book character that you would like. October 25th, Bring It Back, and we have a panel of judges, some art teachers, and some librarians, not myself, that are going to judge that based on literary matching, and then just plain old fun creativity and artistic ability. So, that should be fun. Tell your friends about it if you're not interested. And last but not least, we do have Derek. And, um, last but not least, we do have Derek the Resource coming to the library this Saturday. If you follow us on social media, you know that Derek's application and library card receiving last month, uh, was quite the social media, um, wait, seventeen thousand views of that video. So, um, anyway, Derek's a celebrity in and of its, of him self, fifteen thousand dollars he has earned in racing, um, profits, so he's retired now, and he's doing the library circuit. So, uh, come to the library, his owner has written a picture book about his experience, and, um, kids and the young at heart will love to feed carrots to a horse, so hope to see you all at ten o'clock this Saturday to see Derek. Any questions for the library? Now enjoy your candy.
Thank you, Jeanette. Yeah. I think we've got such a short parade road, otherwise you wouldn't have left over.
Oh, I know. We also handed out small decks of cards.
I got one of them.
Did you get one?
Thank you. Moving on, planning commission, David.
Planning commission, we did meet. We discussed, uh, a section of town on South Main Street that we had a house being built, and it was awful close to the sidewalk. We did some investigating and found that in twenty fifteen, we had rezoned that to R one from R two, and the map, when we did the map, when we redid the map, we missed that that section got changed, and now it says R one A instead of R one. So it created quite the debacle for the city on this, where the house form got put up closer than it should be, higher than it should be, uh, there's, so we're going to see where that goes. That was our meeting, while we found all that information.
I did meet with the builder on Saturday morning. A gentleman, he puts up quality homes. He wanted to know why he wasn't issued an official stop order or stop work order, which he now has. I directed the building inspector to do that. And with my discussion with the building inspector and him, we've elected to allow him to start on the second home until we get this all sorted out. So, uh, the second home will be started with all the required setbacks for an R one zoning. He was okay with that, he could move forward and keep his help busy until we come up with some kind of solution, because as Dave stated, there is not only a setback problem, there's going to be a heath problem with this, so. So we will work that out, and like I said, we don't want to discourage this young gentleman. He showed me his brag book, uh, he puts up some beautiful homes, and they're affordable as well, so I want to make sure that we meet him halfway anyway on this, and make it work, so.
Anything else from planning commission, David?
Oh, that was it.
Moving on, finance, Cheryl.
We have been meeting. Sean is working hard at budget with us, and we have met with all the different departments a couple different nights. Um, we're moving forward to hopefully have our budget ready earlier rather than later, as Sean is able to do it. Um, we've had capital requests come in as well as, um, just a normal request for budgets, and so far, things are looking pretty good. The information that people have given us and the questions we've asked, they've been able to answer. There have been some changes of requests for capital items, instead of this, can we do this because of this, and that change in the process, so. Communication has been really good again this year, and Sean has done a great job of putting things together so far, and we will continue to be meeting so that we can present a final budget. One of the things that did come forward to us was the cable equipment fund. There is money in there for video server equipment. Bob Sweeney has been exceptionally good at being thrifty, conscientious, wise about how he spends, but it's time for some new equipment, and so rather than put this into next year's budget, we told him, spend the money, you have it, so it is in there for that replacement fund, so we have resolution forty-nine, twenty twenty-one. Can you pull that for me?
Yes, that's my connected record.
Okay, thank you. I will.
Got to scroll down.
Yeah.
Go passively. Page forty-seven.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've got it right here.
Um, approve, resolution forty-nine, twenty twenty-one, approved budget amendment to cable equipment fund to approve the purchase of video server. Whereas the finance committee has reviewed the request of the cable TV committee to purchase a new video server, and whereas the finance committee recommends the purchase of a new video server for cable TV in an amount not to exceed twelve thousand dollars from the cable equipment fund. Now therefore be it resolved that the common council of the city of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the city of Juneau this twelfth day of October, twenty twenty-one. I move for passage of resolution forty-nine, twenty twenty-one.
Motion by Brown.
Second.
Second by Granton. Any further discussion? I think, uh, I think as we discussed at cable TV committee, that Bob is run the length of the life of the PC equipment that he's got there. Um, frugal Bob is, he's also treats the city very well with the amount of time that he he allot's or that he actually bills for his time working for the cable TV committee. He's kind of a gentleman and a scholar in that respect. But he is unfortunately looking for somebody to replace him, so I guess if anybody is interested in getting involved with the cable TV committee or operating as a camera operator, as you see tonight, we don't have anybody behind the camera, so, uh, we're definitely looking for help on that end of things. No other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Granton.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Booty.
Aye.
Marose.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Resolution forty-nine, twenty twenty-one has passed.
Resolution fifty, twenty twenty-one is our resolution that Donna brought forward for us to approve us to go ahead and do the signatures and get started with this project for them and for our city with the funds that are available. Resolution fifty, twenty twenty-one, authorization to apply for neighborhood investment fund grant program. Whereas state monies are available under the neighborhood investment fund grant program administered by the Wisconsin Department of Administration, DOA, for the purpose of making significant investments with long-term benefits to help neighborhoods recover from negative effects of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Whereas the Dodge County Housing Authority has asked the city of Juneau to apply for the grant to assist with the development of workforce housing on the property currently owned by Greater Water Town Community Health Foundation between South Street and Crowe Street. And whereas the common council has reviewed the need for the proposed project and the benefit to be gained therefrom. Now therefore be it resolved that the common council is hereby approve and authorize the preparation and filing of an application for the above named project, and that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign all necessary documents on behalf of the city, and that authority is hereby granted to the city council and Dodge County Housing Authority to take the necessary steps to prepare and file the application for funds under this program in accordance with this resolution. Be it further resolved that if awarded, the city council agrees to accept the award passed by the common council of Ju- of Ju- city of Juneau this twelfth day of October, twenty twenty-one. I move for passage of resolution fifty, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Booty. Anything you care to add, Donna?
Um, I just would really thank you guys for the effort. Look, I might tell you all of it later on.
We can't wait to hear.
So this action is not contingent upon planning commission approval at all? Sean?
Correct. I would suggest we apply after the planning commission.
Yeah, and that would happen after anybody's.
Get that cart back behind the horse, right?
Yeah.
Sounds good. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Booty.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Granton.
Aye.
Marose.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Resolution fifty, twenty twenty-one has passed.
Nothing else for finance?
Personnel. Do you feel up to it? Or do you want Cheryl to proxy for you?
I think Cheryl is the proxy for me. I, I haven't been able to find the resolutions, and then I really lost the agenda, so. I'm back with paper.
Took us a year and a half to get used to these things.
Oh, okay, I guess I do have a resolution here. Did you want me to?
If you would, please.
Resolution fifty-one, twenty twenty-one, accept letter, letter of resignation from Sean Hart, clerk treasurer. Whereas the mayor and the common council has received the letter of resignation from Sean Hart, clerk treasurer, and whereas the common council recommends accepting the letter of resignation effective November twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, as seen in exhibit A, now therefore be it resolved that the common council of the city of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the city of Juneau this twelfth day of October, twenty twenty-one. I move for passage of resolution fifty-one, twenty twenty-one.
Is there a second?
Duncan accepted.
It's as simple as that. That's how it works, right?
Yeah, you got them.
Motion by Marose, second by Granton to accept the resignation of our city clerk with regrets. Any further discussion? Sean kind of broke the news to us at our last finance meeting, it was kind of a shocker for all of us on that committee, but, uh, he's got another page in his life that he wants to, wants to turn over, so he will sadly be missed. Great working with you.
It's been a pleasure. It was not something we were actively pursuing, but something that came across and said, take that next step in our life, so. Missed working here, still lots of things I wanted to accomplish, and truly enjoyed working here, and again, it was nothing, nothing bad about the job or the city, so I appreciate working on the hobby.
Keep that cell phone close. You're not here to sell services and catch the last.
His last move was to get closer to his grandkids, so. That was maybe not even quite a year?
Oh, no.
They must be, they must be handful if you're moving that far away.
Maybe they'll be following them.
Maybe. Well, we only wish you the best, Sean.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll call the question. Roll call vote, please.
Um, sorry, two questions.
Marose made the.
Marose.
And second by Granton.
Okay. Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brown.
With regrets, aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Booty.
Regrets, aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Resolution fifty-one, twenty twenty-one has passed. Cheryl, anything else to report from personnel committee? I think we mopped up most of it at last meeting, wasn't it?
Yeah, I don't believe there was anything.
David, you think of anything? We settle on the healthcare program?
That was passed.
Okay, moving on, public safety, John.
Well, we had a meeting, uh, basically we just had the police chief, EMS and fire, emergency guard come in with their preliminary budgets, went through them, and we forward them to finance to go over. And then I have one resolution for trick or treating. Resolution fifty-two, twenty twenty-one, set date and time for trick or treat. Whereas the public safety committee recommends that trick or treating be held on Sunday, October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, between the hours of four PM and six PM in the city of Juneau. Whereas the fire department will be helping with street crossing, and whereas the notice will be sent to the Water Town Daily Times for publication, now therefore be resolved that the common council of the city of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the city of Juneau this twelfth day of October, twenty twenty-one. I move for passage of resolution fifty-two, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion by Schuster, second by Booty. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Schuster.
Aye.
Booty.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Granton.
Aye.
Marose.
Aye.
Resolution fifty-two, twenty twenty-one has passed. Anything else from?
Well, we had, um, eighteen-fifties come in for a, tried to extend their outdoor seating through the end of October, but according to our, yeah. It had ended October first, so. So they're going to try for next year a little longer, so.
Thus far, they're the only ones that are executing it on the, on the front of their, their businesses. Rolling Stone has one on their own private property, but I haven't witnessed that there's been any problems. I've been in contact with the police chief, and he says there hasn't been any issues since it's been extended, so.
Safety, yeah. It's kind of a pilot program.
Yep.
To end the first of October, just the other one. There was no problem that we know of, so. For for next year.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Public works, David.
Scott Carpenter presented the twenty twenty budget to the committee, and we went, went through it and with the fine tooth comb and looked at all this and that, and, uh, there were a few questions we came up with that he was going to discuss with the clerk treasurer as to that, and we passed it on to the finance committee, the budget. We discussed, uh, how things are going with the dumpster, and, um, they still, we're still having difficulties with the last dumpster. We have one new one that's coming in, uh, so we'll be able to continue with what we've been doing on Saturdays and Wednesdays. I was voted in for a meeting.
Any questions for Dave? Moving on, CDA, we did, or cable TV, excuse me. Jane.
Um, cable TV did meet on September twenty-first. We discussed complaints mostly in regards to the internet speed, and we discussed ideas for recording, Scott Carpenter to record a program doing with construction work being done in the Frog Hollow area. Uh, the twenty twenty-two budget for cable TV was forwarded to finance, and the video server was approved previously tonight, and I know the mayor touched on it, but we are in great need of finding a video and state, a video producer and a station manager. So if anybody is willing to learn more about it and to apply for that, it would be appreciated.
Nice retirement job.
It is, it would be.
Any questions for Jane? Thank you, Jane. CDA, we did not meet. Recreation, we met. Fresh my memory here, basically, we went, uh, we've got a new rec director operating now, she's learned in the ropes, felt kind of uncomfortable coming to her first finance committee meeting, but Sean kind of helped her through that, and she's starting to learn, learn all the aspects of that, and, um, I did speak with her over, on Saturday, I drove down by the Wild Goose, uh, park where they were having some soccer games, I don't know if it was a tournament or just games, but it was well attended down there. She seems to be fitting into the mix pretty well. She says this, some of this stuff is new to her and whatever, but she's definitely willing to learn. She's out there throwing the football around with Gail with the, with the tykes there that took on the football program. I stopped at five o'clock one evening down across the community center, they play on the outfield, the Addy Jaws field, and she seems to be doing well. She's very percivable, I think she'll, uh, she'll fit in well. Looking forward to the fall sports where she feels, she's a volleyball player, so she feels a little more comfortable with some of that stuff. That's about all we have for that. Um, I did recommend that they compose a letter, which she told me on Saturday she was working on, to reach out to the other communities that participate in our rec program and possibly look for some help with financing of the, of our rec programs and whatever, rather than just the, the pittance of the, the difference that they pay in fees for being outside of town. I wanted to get into the hands of their township governments and stuff like that, to possibly consider kicking in something towards our rec programs, even though their children within their communities are, are taking advantage of it as well, so. That's about all I had. You got any questions? We'll try to answer them. Kay will be chairing that committee now. New one for me. That'll be a new one for you. Next, we'll move on to utility commission. Richard.
We had a meeting, and, uh, we reviewed and approved the utility budget.
And we reviewed and approved the utility budget for next year. We approved the purchase of an overaxle trailer with, with monies from the Equipment Replacement Fund. We approved the purchase of a three-quarter ton pickup with a trade-in with monies from the Equipment Replacement Fund. We approved the purchase of variable frequency drives for Wells number one and three. Nick reported that the electrical conversion from overhead to underground for Highland Street has started. He said there are a few streetlights around town that are out and the electrical team is waiting for new bulbs to arrive. We met the new employee for the water, wastewater team. Her name is Liz Condon and she's fitting in real well. We approved having Alex Smooty coming off probation status. He also works on the wastewater. And we approved the new sewer rates recommended by the Sewer User Charge Study conducted by Baker Tilly. This requires an ordinance change. That will address shortly. And I got a couple of ordinances. The first one is a second reading. Ordinance 264-2021.
I would move to forego the second reading of ordinance 264, 2021, and approve for passing.
Motion by Brown, a second by Schuster. Any further discussion? This pretty much addresses all our replacement of our lead and galvanized service lines within the private property limits of the, the construction, as well as standing ones that we have out there that aren't going to be affected by construction. So letters have gone out to those people already in regards to getting those upgraded with the help of the grant money that's available. Pretty much it in a nutshell. Any other questions, guys? See none, roll call vote, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Fuddy.
Aye.
Grattan.
Aye.
Marose.
Aye.
Ordinance 264, 2021 has passed.
Okay, so then we have another ordinance. It's ordinance 266-2021. Ordinance to amend City of Juneau. Ordinance 13.08.080. Amount of sewer service charges. The Common Council of the City of Juneau ordains to amend as follows. Amount of sewer service charges. From a general sewer service metered for all users except commercial, industrial users and significant industrial users, the following charges shall apply. One, monthly service charge. The monthly service charge recovers portions of operations, maintenance, replacement and capital costs as shown below. Monthly service charge. Five eighths water meter, $19.93. Three-quarter water, three-quarter inch water meter, $19.93. One inch water meter, $40.18. One and one-quarter inch water meter, $56.18. One and one-half water meter, $73.57. Two inch water meter, $113.85. Three inch water meter, $207.66. Four inch water meter, $341.75. Six inch water meter, $677.13. Eight inch water meter, $1,079.30. Ten inch water meter, $1,615.66. Two, volume charge. Each 1,000 gallons of sewage discharged into the sanitary sewer. Total volume charge, $7.12. Three, credit for water not just discharged to the sanitary sewer. See Sewer Utility Operating Rules and Regulations. B, commercial industrial users. One, monthly service charge, same as general sewer, sewer service. Two, volume and strength charges. Each 1,000 gallons of sewage discharged into the sanitary sewer. The commercial industrial sewer service charge per volume, $7.12. BOD per pound over 250 milligrams per liter, 50, .54. SS per pound over 250 milligrams per liter, .40. PHOS per pound over 6 milligrams per liter, 15.33. Two, a general sewer service metered for all users except commercial industrial users and significant industrial users shall be periodically established by the Utility Commission and approved by the Common Council and shall be kept in the clerk's office. The monthly service charge recovers portions of operations, maintenance, replacement and capital costs. One, monthly service charge. The monthly service charge recovers portions of operations, maintenance, replacement and capital costs. And the monthly service charge shall be periodically established by the Utility Commission, approved by the Common Council and shall be kept in the clerk's office. Two, volume charge. Each 1,000 gallons of sewage discharged into the sanitary sewer cost shall be periodically established by the Utility Commission, approved by the Common Council and shall be kept in the clerk's office. Three, credit for water not discharged to the sanitary sewer. See Sewer Utility Operating Rules and Regulations. B, commercial industrial users. One, monthly service charge, same as general sewer service. Two, volume and strength charges. Each 1,000 gallons of sewage discharged into the sanitary sewer cost shall be periodically established by the Utility Commission, approved by the Common Council and shall be kept in the clerk's office. Section 13.08.080 Sewer Service Charges is hereby amended. First reading, October 12, 2021.
I'm afraid these are not correct. The numbers that are in here are the current, the present monthly rates according to this sheet that I have here in front of me. These are not changed. They're changing it too.
So what we're doing is instead of changing the ordinance every single time the rates change?
Okay.
We're changing it that, we're giving, the ordinance is giving Utility Commission and the Council permission to change a zero resolution. So once this is passed, the next council will have a resolution that changes those amounts.
Thank you. I think you just went through all those, those three old rates.
Instead of, how is it going to be publicized? I guess if it's not an ordinance that people can look up, will it be on a utility website then perhaps?
It can be, sure.
Because I know you always want the ordinance. Those are what my rates are. After a re-change is what they are now. So it's basically to save the codification charges.
Correct.
Still a good idea to publish it, though, on the website.
Yeah, that's why I was asking. It's out there.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Now, what Jane's asking, those numbers will be altered and still listed as an ordinance?
No.
The, the sewer rates will not be listed in the ordinance anymore.
Okay, and that's allowed?
Put it like.
No, we're not changing the ordinance every year if you want to change the rates every year, right?
Understand that. Well, the, our sewer utility is, is not regulated. It's deregulated, so we don't have to go to PSC for approval. So I'm assuming the water and electric rates will still have to go through ordinance then? I don't know if they ask that question.
Whether they're ordinance or not.
Because of regulation, I think.
Yeah. Because the sewer utility is the only one on three that's, that's not regulated, it's deregulated, so. That way you can go in for yearly increases if you want to.
Right.
Where usually your water and sewer rates are every seven to 10.
So we won't know what the new rates are until the resolution is presented, correct?
Hmm.
Okay.
Everybody clear on that?
Thank you for looking me interesting.
No, it's good.
Not seeing a number here.
The rates won't make effect until.
The second reading.
Right.
Well, the second reading of the ordinance has to happen.
And then we have that resolution.
Yes.
It can pass that same.
Yeah, that'll be incorporated.
It just happens to be our, it's a secondary current.
Right. Any other questions? Good question. Any other questions?
That's it for utility.[1726.24]